Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen, Cole, Parliament, Mayor Heinens.
And yeah, Mayor, I just want to recuse myself from B. That's on my street. So I'm just recuse myself from voting.
Sure. The best explanation is on page forty, item number six. It allows for zero lot line setbacks on single-family attached dwellings, townhomes, twin homes. If the surrounding property around the structure is held in common by an HOA and meets the setback requirements. So the townhouse itself would be individually owned. It would have a zero lot line setback on the sides, the rear and the front. As long as there is a larger parcel that is owned by the HOA that meets those setback requirements.
It's up to you if you're allowed. Actually, it is a public hearing.
It's a public hearing?
Yeah. Sorry, Mayor, it is a public hearing.
Okay, you're talking about zero setback. Is that from the, from the property line, zero setback, correct? Okay, now, I've got townhomes on the south side of my property that are, as far as I'm concerned. What is the setback? Because right now, when they built them, I came down here to complain. I talked to the guy building them. And now they're mowing my field. And the setback on one, on the townhomes of Clark, right next to Chestnut, they're probably a good twenty-some foot away from my property line. But the, but the ones on the inside row of townhomes. If I put my hot wire in there to put my cattle out there, I don't think anybody's going to walk between there, let alone push a lawnmower through there. Now they're going through there with fifty-four inch lawnmowers and mowing off the kid that farms my ground, his corn or his beans or his hay or whatever. So I think if you're thinking about a zero setback, that better not be next to my property.
So Brian, I guess I, when you explained it here at our briefing meeting here last Thursday, I understood that this zero setback was for townhomes that had a joint wall. Is it something different than that?
No, it's basically the same thing. It's for a townhome that is individually owned. So the unit is individually owned, but the property around it is held by an HOA.
Okay. Okay, what's an HOA? I'm sorry, I'm stupid.
Homeowners Association.
Okay.
Or the, the folks that own the townhomes individually. They have a, they have a separate organization that owns the property in common around the townhouse or the twin, the twin. So the structure itself, if they're individually owned, would have a zero lot line setback as long as there's enough space by the property joined, owned in common. So side yard setback would still need to be seven feet from the property line. The front setback would still need to be twenty-five. The rear would have to be twenty, et cetera. Of the structure to the-
Okay, now does that include the cement egress window that sticks out this far and then it's about three foot from my property line?
I don't believe egress windows are counted as in the setback. It's through the foundation wall.
Okay.
So it's supposed to be twenty feet, you said, from the back?
Yeah, I think that's the rear setback.
From the foundation of the place?
Yep.
To, and what if it's not? Like if it's close to its property, I know exactly what he's talking about, where it's at, so.
Then it, it's not allowed.
Are you double sure about this cement egress? Because I mean, I got the guys that own the townhomes, I don't know who they are, I know one of the owners. But you got a cement egress, cement curb coming out about a foot wide, probably, I don't know, probably, well, I suppose if it's an egress window, it's probably going to be two and a half to three foot deep. And then another three, four foot this way and then another three foot deep this way. And that's like about, I don't know. Three, three foot away from my property line? I mean, like I said, if I put a hot wire, hot wire in or a fence there, they can mow all they want, but they better not cut any of my wires.
So what I'd say, if you're talking about a specific property issue you have, the best thing to do to resolve that is to contact the city, give us the property line and we can go and tell you if something's over it or not and whether they were grandfathered in, that's number one. Number two, if somebody is on your property, you're not supposed to be there, you have legal rights that you can handle and, and deal with. That's not for the city, that's for you and a private owner.
I've addressed that to the property.
Yeah, so if there's a certain, that would a question that our building inspector can come in and take a look at, if you want to contact the city tomorrow morning, they can put that down and Paul can come out and take a look at it and see if there is a violation.
All right. I just don't understand why you would, I understand if it's a, the guy that owns the townhomes and he owns the property adjacent to the north of it, which is my property, there better not be any building on my property line because I'll stop it like that.
Okay, first, this back to ordinance six thirty-six, zero setback. I believe we had a motion to approve and a second. So at this point, are there any other questions?
So Tim, this was reviewed by P and Z and passed with a do recommenda, do pass for us?
Okay, at this point, we'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Ellison safety and annexation concerns. And again, I, I respect the fact that, come on up, we'll, we'll take a few minutes, but quite frankly, at this point, we're probably a little early than, than what we should be.
David Sandy Ellison, eleven oh two North Chestnut, which is the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of section twenty-five. Brandon Township, for those of you that know the farming lingo. On the agenda, the safety is not on the annex, the safety is a concern with the water tower, that's the first item. And then I'd also like to address about the annexation. As far as, we've seen multiple problems up at the water tower site, which is directly south of our residence. There's been lots of construction actually blocking the road because there's no staging area. Which I believe in the first go-around, there was supposed to have been an acre for the water tower and an acre for staging. So unloading of semis and, or, and pickups and other trucks are blocking the area. One day, when I was leaving our residence and going south, there was a trucker who was backing up with his unloaded semi. And he got out and I says, I don't know what I'm going to do here. There's nobody flagging. I have to black, back through a blind intersection here, which is Chestnut or Redwood, excuse me, running east and west and there's no stop signs. I says, well, what do you want me to do? You know, I'm not a part of this. But as a neighbor, I went up, stopped traffic on the top of the hill, because if someone would have been coming from the east, they never would have been able to stop. So that's one of the safety concerns we're worried about. Other things are open trenches and lack of safety flags and whatnot. One night when we came home at sunset, there was a lowboy trailer with a crane on it, dolly down. Not one safety flare, no barricades, nothing at all. That's creating a big problem. Who do we, who do we call? We've tried to call Tammy, we've gotten no response. Who's the head of your safety department here so we could call them? If we see something that we believe, you know, deemed as a safety problem, I've been in construction most of my life. So when I was involved, you have safety directors on the job and you know who to report to. We'd like to have a contact of somebody who would, you know, could reply to us.
This is on a dead end road. So there's three families involved. Teenage drivers, little kids, lots of, used to be lots of residents would come out there and walk and so on and so forth. Now the problem we have is when we try to drive through, they've got to load the side dump gravel on the one side of the road, of the gravel road, not that big of a road, but, so when they dump that and leave that there for days, it's an issue. They can't come out and grade the road after the storm and after their heavy equipment has gone across it. So we're taking our personal vehicles. You know, hard to see their equipment. They'll have the, you know, back, whatever you call it, back hose, any pieces of their equipment. Multiple days, there's been multiple pieces of equipment moving around in that job site. And they're going across the road into the road or unloading things, backing into the road. We can see that from, we're leaving the farm, I can see what's up there and what's going on. Multiple pieces of equipment, no flagman out there to get us through. We have to stop, we have to wait, we have to make sure we get eye contact with who's doing what. Can we go through or not? You know, we have to motion all this, we have to ask them, you know, and I'm not comfortable with that. I don't like it when I have to be directed to drive partway into the ditch. They had a semi on one side. They had, the other lane was clear. I told the guy, you know, motion, I wanted to go this way. Nope, nope. I had to go down in the ditch, had my grandkids in the backseat. Here's my car here and the other half was down in the ditch to get by them. You know, when they're unloading, you know, and it's just, you know, really hard for us. And I know, we're just, we're just a few people, don't really matter. Nobody else goes on that road or sees that road, does anything with that road. We were told, the city of Brandon, that we were going to have access, that road was going to be open. Well, guess what? They're not keeping it open, it's a staging area. And I talked to John Fisher at Stockwell. And I advised him of that and I said, you know, what are you going to do about that? Is this, are they about done with their tractor trailers loading and unloading equipment on that road? Because we're going to be getting into the fall season, the winter season. We all work, we all go places, every, school. You know, everything that's going on out there. And he stated to me that we may have to revisit that because, no, this is going to be an eighteen-month project. We're into it only a few months. And we've had this disruption constantly. Any of you that have been out there, Jack Parliament has been out there, he knows the job site specifically. And the rest of you are probably out for the groundbreaking. So please keep in mind the safety and our lifestyle and the fact that they needed, you know, when they talked to my husband about the land that they needed, John Brown with Stockwell said, Dave said, sell you one acre? And he says, no, we need two. Well, I'll lease you the other one during your construction period. I don't want to sell you two acres. John said, no, we must have two acres, we have to have one acre for staging. There's too much equipment. And he went on about all the work that was going to be done, big equipment, the big pieces, the big cranes, big pipes that are going to be used for, so for eighteen months, our lives are supposed to be disrupted like this? Totally, you know, totally unacceptable to me.
Right. Well, first of all, apologize for, you know, I feel your pain because it certainly, safety comes first. We, we're, we have to make sure that that's happening. And I would look for some direction on who to call if there's an issue. I don't know if it's a safety issue with the police, whether or not they should be notified to, at least if there's-
It would be the sheriff.
The sheriff, that's true. Yeah, I'm sorry. But Brian, can you give us some direction here?
Yeah, I can certainly reach, call Tammy, she was on vacation. Or if Tammy's not in, call me. Call Riley Huckey, our public works director, if there's an issue.
What, what has happened to the staging area? I mean, it, it would make sense as big of, I mean, I live out that way too, so I see stuff coming and going and, and there is a lot of equipment. Is there, Tammy, is there a staging area at all? So to speak?
Yes and no. We did buy that one acre and we did ask for temporary easement for a staking, for a staging area. We did receive that, but we didn't put up the tower as soon as we had hoped. And so that temporary easement was no longer valid. So it was on to the contractor if he wanted to pursue that any further and they decided not to.
Really?
Realized that they're using the right of way quite a bit for staging. And tomorrow, we're going to close the road and do a water tie-in. So hopefully that's kind of the last big step and then they can clean it up. So the road is going to get better. It is an eighteen-month project, but that's for the whole tower. So there's still going to be construction vehicles there, but hopefully they're not staging anything in the right of way. And I have talked to the contractor and our engineer, Stockwell, about making sure that they're no longer using the road to stage. And we'll find other places, whether it's like the hockey rink down by McCarty Park or something for equipment overnight.
Tammy, is there any way to make them do the easement and keep it? I mean, since we, we can't?
We don't own the land. We can't force a temporary easement.
And they wouldn't extend, the owners wouldn't extend the easement?
No.
And that is? The owners? No, who are they?
The Nelsens.
Who, who actually sold the land to the city, correct? Who actually sold the one acre to the city? Yes. And now they won't give you an easement?
They did originally. And then it was on to the contractor to pursue it and-
Even if the township agrees with us, you can't use the road as a staging area. So my question is, what's the city going to do? Semis come in because they don't know that there's no place to turn around. So they, you will be getting, that site will be getting semis, lots of them. There's no way they can back up. Someone will get injured and/or killed.
We advised John Fisher at Stockwell what had happened because there's been more than one flatbed that backed through that intersection and sat there. I saw it because I was coming on Redwood.
You're, you're right, coming from the east on Redwood.
You know, that's, that's a blind intersection there. There's no way. And I just saw a kid going to school, you know, the other, last week and he must have been going fifty or sixty coming up over that hill and, you know, they, they-
Yeah, even though there's a thirty mile speed limit at that corner, nobody pays attention to that speeding limit to the mile from the east.
We, we expect-
So there is a problem.
We expect, you know, what we'd like to have see happen is we'd like to have them change the access. I explained to John Fisher from, for the job site. I don't know what it would entail, I'm sure money. But if the access for the area should be from Redwood, it should not be from Chestnut. And they should have a staging area, which is what we were originally told they had to have. They had to have a staging area. You guys have no idea of the equipment and I'm sorry Tammy, but John Fisher said, this is not the end of the trucks. You can have whatever you want and go over to the hockey rink and park overnight. That's not what we're talking about. That's one of, that's one of the issues. That's not the day-to-day semi traffic that's unloading and loading and the different pieces of equipment that have to come up to the truck then, on the road and remove it. And what are we supposed to do? We, they'd have no flagman out there to direct traffic. Their cones are very poorly marked. You know, you guys have a big problem on your hands and if there's an issue out there with an accident.
Spencer, I think he'd add, like to add something on our behalf.
My name's Spencer Schenk. I live at nine twenty North Chestnut Boulevard. I'm actually David Sandy's neighbors. And I've been doing construction for over twenty years. We may have a little bit of pain now, but when they start building on water tower, it's like Legos. So they lay all these Legos out and need real estate to do that. There is no room out there to do that now. So where are they going to do that? They're going to do it in the ditch. Well, you can, you have, you can use the right of way. However, you still have to maintain a clear zone. So no, you can't use all the ditch. So we're not going to allow dollies down trailers because when I came home from work, there was two semi trailers, dolly down in front of my driveway that I couldn't even get in my house. And so that is unacceptable on a half lane, on a road like that, because I can't even get by with my pickup. We're talking little skinny gravel roads here. It's not like a street.
Yeah.
So, I mean, especially when, you know, if it was a street in town, yeah, that's different. They're thirty-three, you know, each lane's thirty-three feet wide. The entire road is thirty-three feet wide. So I mean, you know, this project, as it keeps going, is continuing to get worse. And so this needs to be addressed. The other thing is too, is there's a lot of safety concerns. First off, these trailers that are being dolly down at night, there's no triangles. They're over the crest of a hill, especially that crane truck that we called the sheriffs about. If someone would have came over that hill, because people do drive down that road at night, they would have, they would have hit it. And that's at the level, it would have taken you, it would have taken you off the head. And there was no tractor in front of it. It was just a dolly down trailer. So when we tell you that they are using the road as a staging area, they are literally unhooking their trailers and they're leaving them there overnight. So this is a serious safety concern that needs to be addressed. Now, I know, you know, there has been attempts to deal with this. And I know we've, you know, I've sent Tammy multiple emails and I know everyone else has too. But, I mean, these things, we need, you know, we need some resolution for this because someone's going to get killed. And I'm not just saying that's just a re-aravel rouser and disturb. I mean, we're telling you, we're screaming from the rooftops, please do something before someone gets hurt and all we hear are crickets.
Well, I've got to be honest, this is the first time I've really heard the major concern that, so I appreciate that. And I don't think any of the other councilmen, Jack may have heard, you know, from, from you guys, from David.
And, and we had a conversation about it. And I know you guys are working hard toward, but I mean, I mean, what if-
Your concern was more on the compaction of the, of the road at that point.
That's a whole nother, that's a whole nother issue.
I was just saying, you didn't get into the safety part when you and I conversed. But anyway, I would ask that the, Tammy, that we, we revisit this staging area and see if there's any possibility of, of the easement. Yeah, they, apparently we've lost the chance for that, but safety is a concern. And it's, it's going to be, it's going to be another twelve to fourteen months of construction out there. So we've, we've got to make sure we're safe. That's first and foremost. And, you know, maybe we need to have a conversation with the contractor, with Stockwell, so that they're aware of how, you know, the pain points that we're, we're seeing, especially from a safety standpoint, so.
I did go over a number of those with John Fisher.
Yeah.
And he was very understanding. And the one thing he did do when, when I called was, you know, take care of it the next day, the day that they had, a couple of days they had the road closed. So they made an access for us where we had to go down in the ditch and through. But the rock that they had on there was that large pink rock. Well, I wasn't going to drive my car, my personal vehicle through there. And I said, will you? And he said, no, that's construction grade stone. That's not meant to use that. So he would get gravel out there and he did. The next morning, they brought their side dump and put dump of rock there, gravel, and then they put it down on the road so that when we had to go down and around. But then we had to drive through, I drove this far from a trench with two guys in it. I was driving on this little access road, you know, and I was like, oh my God, there's men down in there. You know, not safe. That, that, my brother-in-law's been in a trench, you know, so that, that is right at the top of my mind, you know. It's just, one thing after another, you guys, you really have to pay attention to what's going on out there. We shouldn't have to call you. The Stockwell should be out there, Tammy should be, whoever, somebody should be overseeing that and seeing what kind of work that those guys are doing.
I think now that we're much more aware of it than what we had been, we'll, do our due diligence and go from there.
On that same topic, I am Jess Ellison. I'm David Sandy's son. I live at eleven oh four North Chestnut. I have a teenage daughter that travels that road. But as far as the road closures go, I've never been told. No one has ever alerted me. I've never received a letter or a phone call. Tammy, after three weeks of me messaging her, finally, when she got back from vacation, messaged me and told me- that you guys would be closing the road down tomorrow. But like I still.
The intersection.
Yeah, the intersection. And when the other road got closed down, I came home with a trailer with about 10,000 pounds of stone on it. And they had to jump around and pull up stakes because they didn't have any way for me to get through there. And like, and then I'm sitting there and I'm, I'm working.
That's just a car trailer.
Yeah, and I'm working, you know, I'm kind of on a clock. And I'm sitting there for 15, 20 minutes while they try to figure out like, oh, like, you know. And so when they say there was access around it, I mean, yeah, dude, if I had a four-wheeler. And it's, it's just, and I have, we've all been calling. We've all been calling and emailing and texting and, and we don't get a reply and, and nothing happens. You know, so it is frustrating. And thank God OSHA finally showed up because nobody else was doing nothing. And OSHA, you know, there are, there was multiple violations and nobody's overseeing it. And like OSHA even told me, like on the phone, he's like, yeah, I've never seen a job site this bad. He's like, I, I have no idea how it has come to this. And he's like, oh, don't worry, you know, we'll keep it confidential, like, you know, anything you say, like, and you know what? I don't have a problem with it. Like, this, these are problems. And we have, we're just getting walked all over out there. And like, you know, Brian says, call them. Do we do? No one, no one gets back to us. Nobody. I'm the only one that Tammy's replied to. And so it's just, you know, we're, we're extremely frustrated.
Right. Well, and we, we can hear the frustration and we'll, we'll be better at it. That's all I can tell you. We'll do some investigating. And I think, seems to me, the staging area is a pretty important piece of this whole puzzle because stuff has to sit someplace and you have, do have large equipment. So give us a chance.
Thank you.
No, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for responding to us. And, and, and we've, we honestly feel like we're being heard. It's the first time we've been responded to in a way of like, yeah, you know, and that's, it's really all we want. And just to see that action out of somebody.
I mean, we all know there's going to be some give and, give and take. It's not going to be perfect, but.
Oh, yeah.
Safe it has to be. That has to be in all cases. Safe, you may not like where you have to drive at this and that. I appreciate your car and not having to go. But we have got to be safe. Of anything else, that's the one thing that, that we have to insist upon with, with our contractors. So we'll work on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would just like to take two minutes and address the annexation. This is your study, comprehensive plan from, for 2035.
And like I said, David, we'll, we'll listen just for a minute.
Sure.
We're not ready to make any comments.
Just short. And if you just want to turn to the last page, this is Brandon's comprehensive plan. Goal number five, preserve the function and character of rural area. And under that is objectives, encouraging agriculture to remain the dominant land use activity. We are a farm. Everyone on the north side of Redwood is a farm or ranch. We request tonight, right now, that we be removed from the annexation process under your guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the stormwater presentation.
Jacob is here with AE2S.
I enjoyed your presentation. It was well done.
Thank you. Is this, is this on? And Christina, are you going to advance the slides or can I borrow something? Thank you, everybody. I'm Jacob Strombeck with AE2S here to talk about your stormwater utility implementation, kind of where we're at in the process and how we're going to hopefully get to the go-live implementation start in January of 2022. I was asked to try to keep this about 15 minutes, but feel free to ask questions and however we want to go through this. Sliding. The other, the other, there we go. All right, to start with, why, why do it? Well, managing stormwater is very important. One of the big things is now as the city crosses over the 10,000-person mark, you will be required to obtain an MS4 permit, which will have some of its own additional costs and requirements of the community. Also, great way to help protect the environment, drinking water supplies, prevent flooding from extreme storm events, et cetera. And then by going through this process, like you have been, we're looking to develop a utility fee that is very equitable. So we're, we're developing a fee structure that charges parcels based on how they impact the system and how they utilize your stormwater infrastructure today and something that then can evolve as the community continues to grow. My swipe left features. There we go. So I did provide a bunch of additional background slides just to kind of have in the packet. I'm going to hit a few highlights of it and then we'll get into the, the actual rate structure and the next steps. So again, stormwater is really the, this peak flow that comes from heavy rainfall events. And we're really trying to target runoff from surfaces like roofs, driveways, parking lots. Those are really the, the heavy sources of, of runoff and what we need to manage. And then stormwater can definitely be harmful in terms of running off pollutants from driveways, pollutants from parking lots, all that sort of trash that gets left out, all that's ways, can make its way into your stormwater system and into local water bodies, et cetera. So there is definitely a benefit and a reason to want to have these utilities and want to go implement them to protect your stormwater utility and infrastructure. Maybe I should have you be doing this. I'm going to jump a couple of slides there. All right. So I'm going to talk a little bit about impervious area, just so this is a key item in the, how we develop the rate structure for your utility. So impervious area are the hard surfaces such as structures, asphalt, compacted gravel, that really have the high stormwater runoff components. And we also looked at impervious and looking at it two different ways. We did look at the buildings and look at them as more of a non-pollution generating surface. So think about like rainfall hits the rooftop or heavy rain and it doesn't necessarily pick up the pollutants from the roadways. So we looked at that, that that would be a good potential to have a little different rate compared to the runoff from the driveways and actual parking lots. So here's what I really wanted to get into today. So feel free to stop me and ask if you have any questions on a lot of that background slide. But this were the, the seven things I really wanted to touch on today, kind of provide some overview of the previous study, where we're at. Show some of the actual parcel analysis that was performed. Talk about the rate structure, rate design, what that looks like for individual parcels. And then how would we project that into the future? And then there is some considerations for policy at the end and then next steps. So to start with, a study was done, I'll go to here. You had completed a drainage plan in 2020. And part of that had identified a bunch of needs for new infrastructure, et cetera. And one of those items in there was to develop a stormwater utility to generate the revenue to pay for all those other items in the drainage plan. So the chart on the right here is a series of different stormwater fee structures that were explored. From, if you look at the top, those are the ones that are generally the more simplified rate structures, all the way to the bottom, which become really complex. And with that complexity brings in some additional levels of accuracy, but also can be really hard to maintain. So when we explored the data that was available here in Brandon, what rate structures kind of fit, we ended up with a, a model that's fairly well in the middle of this. So it's a combination of an impervious surface area based calculation. But then we've, we distilled the residential rate down to a flat rate. So we have individual bills calculated for individual parcels. But then when it comes to the residential, we aggregated everything to make more of a uniform rate that was easier to administer. At that, part of that study did also recommend differentiating between pollution versus non-pollution generating runoff. Or we do that by looking at the two different classes of impervious area. So we did set the rate for pollution generating at 50% higher than the rate for the non-pollution area. And you'll see that when we get into the next slides. And I've got two little graphics there on that bottom that kind of show if we take an open space like a park and we have a heavy stormwater event, we can expect to see, these are some example numbers, but you might see 50% of the water soak in. 40% could evaporate sort of after the storm ends and then only 10% runs off. If you flip that and look at a urbanized lot that is mostly parking lot and building, we could see upwards of 55% or more of that storm event really runoff. So we want to make sure our rate structure does capture that. So moving gears to the parcel analysis, we did take aerial imagery of the entire city and go parcel by parcel to look at calculating how much of that building, how much of that parcel is a building footprint? How much is concrete or other sorts of impervious pavement and how much is grass? So we did this for all 3,700 residential parcels to come up with an aggregated value, kind of representative parcel. And on the next slide here, we did also do it for all the non-residential parcels as well. And that really set the stage then for developing the, the rates that we'll get into on the next slide. So quick summary, there, yeah, 30,000, 52 parcels in total for residential. You can kind of see the range of percent impervious. You have a few that are generally, you know, 10% or less percent impervious. Likely some areas that are yet to develop versus some really large, 90 to 100% impervious areas, which are likely the condos and townhomes where the green spaces on the other parcel around it, kind of similar to the discussion earlier this evening. From a non-residential perspective, there's 387 parcels at the time we ran the, the math this spring with a pretty wide range of percent impervious. So what we then did to design the rate is we looked at, we had all this great data on all the parcels. We wanted to figure out, I'm going to jump ahead, we'll come back to that if we need to, actually. I do want to hit, all right. So we, the whole, the stormwater utility fee is based on total property area. So for residential, we have that sort of aggregated value. And then we look at the amount of impervious area within each parcel and then use that to calculate a individual stormwater rate. So for residential, the common residential rate ended up being calculated at a flat $4.91 per month. The non-residential fee is based on two values. So we have the dollars per square foot of the pollution generating impervious and then a dollar per square foot of the non-pollution generating. And then we did equate the minimum non-residential bill to equate to a residential bill. So there was no, that was out, the residential bills set the baseline and all other properties would either pay at that baseline or more. So here's some examples of the math on how, how it works. So for, for residential, the average impervious area of your residential parcel stock is around 4,800 square feet. Close to 50/50 between building and the parking lots and other impervious spaces. When you use those unit rates, you calculate a $4.91 monthly bill. So it's kind of column one times two gets you column three. And the plan going forward is to bill the residentials on, parcels on a monthly basis tied with the current utility bills. That will help provide some cash flow and some simplicity with most residential properties are already in the utility billing system. And it does provide a bit of a seamless opportunity to add this other utility bill. As for non-residential, this is, so every parcel again has its own unique bill that's calculated based on its parcel characteristics. How much of it is impervious? How much of that is a building and how much of that is the non-building? So this is an example of a one-acre commercial property that was 75% impervious. Of that, for discussion, say 25% of that was a building, 75% was non-building. So you can see the numbers where that would break out to 32,000 square feet of impervious area, of which 8,000 is a building. Those values get multiplied then by those unit rates. So the 1.4 cents per square foot for the non-building, the .98 cents, .8 dollars per the building's footprint to calculate the monthly, or the annual bill in this case. So that's $440 annually. And for the non-residential properties, we intend to bill them as part of their tax rolls. So they will get an annual bill for, for this utility. And then for comparison, the column on the right would show what that looks like from a monthly standpoint. All right, now to the, I guess, the questions that always come up, like how do you, how do you compare with, how would this compare with pure communities? So this is a graphic from our AE2S's annual rate survey. So this is all of the stormwater utilities that participated in our survey. And this is showing the average monthly bill comparison. And at your $4.91, you're right in the middle of the chart, which when we work with utilities to implement new rate structures and make changes, this is a good place to be. You really don't want to be at the way top. You don't want to be at the way bottom, so. And I did bring some additional copies of the rate survey that I'll leave here. If anyone wants to see the rest of it, it goes through water and wastewater and all sorts of utility metrics within the region. If we look, jump just to take that same chart and boil it down to just South Dakota, you can see where your residential bill is still in the middle, maybe on the slightly higher side. But it's a very workable stormwater rate, especially when you start to compare it for outside of this geography.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
How'd you come up with the $4.91? Where does that?
All right.
How'd you arrive at that number?
So the, the basis of the whole thing, and I, I kind of skipped the slide because it was, I realized it was worded wrong. But the, the target was a $400,000 annual budget for the utility. And that was based on some of the work that was done in the previous drainage study and then in discussions with Tammy and Christina. We set a budgetary goal of $400,000. So what you do is we have the total city's impervious area and you divide, or you take the 400,000 divided by the area and you calculate the unit rates. So we know when we apply the rates, we generate exactly $400,000. And then for the residential, you take all of them, we took them all and averaged them and $4.91 is the average.
So then a follow-up question to that, how does that 400,000 get used? Because I've seen some residents ask what this is actually for. So like, if you were to dumb it down, what would your explanation be?
So the, and I will have Tammy and Christina probably add in some additional on their thoughts. But generally, the 400,000, part of it will go to some of this MS4 compliance as it happens. Another big piece of this is, do you have a lot of infrastructure that was installed in the past or in the aging stage of it? And having dedicated revenue to fund the maintenance and O and M of that is something that we will, you'll need as you continue to grow and the existing infrastructure ages. So there also will be a fully developed capital improvements plan as the utility evolves.
That MS4 permit that you talk about, I mean, is that substantial? How much is that?
Parts of it are, some parts of it can be, parts of it aren't. Generally, the six components are quite a bit of public education and outreach, which isn't necessarily expensive, but does take time. There is public participation and involvement activities. I did, I figured that question was come up, so I, I wrote it down. Illicit discharge detection and elimination is another one. And that one can have some substantial costs associated with tracking down if there are illegal discharges to the system and mitigating that. There also will come with construction site stormwater management requirements, which our city has some in place. So this would be more of making sure that those can meet the state's MS4 guidelines. So this would be more of making sure that those can meet the state's MS4 guidelines. There's also some additional post-construction management and then pollution prevention measures. So they're, they're not super well-defined and the state, as you work through the process, you'll get some more clarity on what those look like, but. Good question. Any other questions? Or I, I got a bunch of other bill examples to lock through.
And we're looking at implementation in next year, January?
Correct. Yep, so we would, the non-residential parcels, the initial bill will be finalized October, November of this year. So then they can get, be put part of the 2022 tax roll. And then the residential bills will be on the utility bill starting January 1 is the plan.
And the residential bills are monthly and the non-residential are yearly fee?
Yep.
Looking at the bill comparisons for non-residential, I noticed that for residential, Sioux Falls had, was on the chart. I don't see Sioux Falls anywhere on any of these charts for the non-residential five acre, one acre. Any idea why they would be missing or?
That is a good question. They should be there. We have the data. When we're done here, I'll look if we have them in there.
Okay, I just, yeah.
Sioux Falls participates on our rate survey and we've made these graphics custom for this presentation, so there's a chance they're, they just fell off the radar, but.
I just wondered if they, they didn't charge marginal for some reason?
Yeah, no, we, they do. We've done a lot of work with the city of Sioux Falls and their stormwater charges. But we do have that data available. So the next few slides are really showing bill comparisons for different sized commercial properties at different percent imperviouses, perviousness. And again, you're right in the middle, which is a good spot to be as you roll out a new utility. So when it comes to communicating some of these new changes, there have been some bill stuffers that are in the works. I know there's plans for additional bill stuffer to educate the people that are paying the bills, along with other social media, website content and things like that as the year progresses.
These are the bill stuffers that Andrew put together at A2S, their marketing. Professional marketing gal there put those together.
Yep. Yeah, so these are the bill stuffers that would go along with the utility bill to provide additional information, along with social media and website updates to give the general public quicker access to the information on why the utility's been implemented and the needs for it.
Quick question, it says here it increases 5% every year for five years, right?
Yep.
And then what's it expected to do after that? Is there just like a, we went flatten out, right? I mean, or what do you do?
It's hard for you beyond five years. So it's really just like we're looking at water and sewer on an annual basis. We'll look at these rates on an annual basis.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, so the, this slide has kind of the thought basis on that. We tried to match some of the growth rates for your water rate study. Started at the 400,000. And then we also wanted to build in a little bit of operating reserve, which is the industry best practice for utilities. Kind of a little bit of a extra fund if something crazy happens. So by the time you get to 2027, we've built that additional reserve into the utility and that equates to the 5% annual growth. Good question. Yeah, and then beyond 2027, we'll really come to see how the utility operates, its long-term staffing needs, how it kind of grows as it develops and becomes more robust.
And I suppose it would say even how much Brandon grows, right? That taken consideration too, right? I like these, I just, very nicely done. For someone that doesn't know much about stormwater, I, I like this.
One thing I don't see in this flyer going out is what it's going to pay for, as Dana. And I think we all understand what it's going to pay for, but it really needs to be communicated to the public. The types of projects, for instance, possibly even specifics if possible. I'd like to see some explanation of the, the different projects that we'd be looking at.
I think that's a really good, really good point to provide a little more detail on what the plans are with the initial revenue.
Okay.
So the last couple of slides just showing quickly what that 5% rate looks like for residential, growing from $4.91 to, to $6. Similar slide, there's a lot of numbers there, but showing what that growth looks like for a variety of different commercial properties with different sizes and percent impervious. And then I did want to touch on the policy a little bit and then we can wrap.
Quick, quick comment or question there? So kind of along with what, what projects are we looking at in the future? Does it need to be a 5%? Or is that just a number we're picking out of the air? Can it be 3% and we still fulfill some of these projects without knowing what projects are in the pipeline to be done? I don't know that we can set a specific budget, especially with an escalator on it.
So the, the 5% that's in here was based on matching the growth assumptions from the water fund, kind of how that utility saw the need for revenue grow with the addition of building in that reserve factor. But you're, you're absolutely right. I mean, you get an opportunity year over year to adjust and, and set these rates, but we wanted to kind of show you what we thought five years look like with some reasonable growth rates that would, would get you in a position to accomplish quite a few of the, the projects.
There was also a number of infrastructure projects listed out in the 2020 storm drainage study.
Yes.
Several.
Yeah.
A million, millions of dollars. So, I mean, we can get you that study or get you a list of those in that study, but.
We know what those are, we're seeing a public dust.
Okay, yeah.
That's my whole point.
Yeah.
If we're going to sell it to the public, we've got to be able to sell the projects to them, not, not the money.
Which is piggyback simple is good, not like, here's a 30-page study, have at it type of thing.
I guess really good suggestion, get some simplified bullet points for what the types of projects are.
And if we can get specific.
Yep. Alright, jumping to the credit policy. So this is a policy that will, it is currently, I believe it's attached to the rate resolution that'll be up for discussion and approval in a future meeting. But generally, we wanted to make sure that there was a policy in place for parcels, primarily non-residential parcels, that are the ones that have the larger impacts, a way to, to challenge their utility bill and then have the ability to get a reduced bill if they meet certain criteria. So the way this policy was set up is it's going to allow for a 50% reduction in the utility bill if the parcel can demonstrate a couple of different measures. And it can be any of these or combos of these. But we'd be looking for a reduction in flow rate. So we want to see a meaningful reduction in direct runoff from the site. Or we'd want to see a increase in the storage. So a lot of the policies the city has will require a certain amount of retention onsite. We want to see above and beyond that. Or we, if we'd give, consider a credit for a reduction in total volume. So you could still have a pretty quick runoff event, but you've reduced that total amount that left the site. So all those three things together are really beneficial to the system to reduce the size of infrastructure. So we would then consider a reduced bill up to 50% based on if they can meet these criteria. And the last slide was just a quick rundown of next steps. So the ordinance was, had its first and second reading over the last few weeks. The resolution, including the credit policy is part of that, I believe is still planned for the 20th. And then again, we're planning to go live with the new rates, January 1st, 2022, with making sure we have the non-residential squared away prior to the tax roll deadlines. And then the last piece is execute those communication points. So that's getting the bill stuffers out there, you know, working on our messaging to make sure we have the right tools to, to tell people as questions come up.
Does this apply to any, are there any vacant lots in Brandon that don't have water bills?
So the, the vacant lot, we've had a lot of discussion around that and it's really a time, a function of probably timing. So when the lot is a large sort of, or you know it's going to be residential and the plats are there, so it's been quasi-platted, but they're working through actually building them, we would just not charge them the fee until the actual water meter service is installed. Just because it becomes a very complicated process to charge the landowner at the time versus developer versus et cetera. Now, if those properties end up just sitting there for a long time and as we're doing our periodic updates, then we would look at a way to bill them if they are indeed utilizing the infrastructure.
I was probably thinking more along the lines of commercial lots and maybe we don't have very many. I used to have one and that's what made me think of it.
Most of the commercial stuff we should be picking up. If it uses the system, if it impacts the system, it will get a bill, even if it's vacant. Because we're going to build the property owner based on the tax rolls.
Well, I can see a lot of developers, and there, there are a few around already where they're buying plots of land on spec, on speculation. And they might sit on that property for five, five years or better. And they're going to get off scot-free? I don't, I don't quite get that.
Well, so that's where, if they sit on them long enough and there's actually infrastructure that's serving that area, you know, you could in turn bill them. We were just thinking, to keep it simple, on the, on the, on the properties that develop fast, we're just going to wait till there's actual houses in there. On these long-term ones, there definitely is some consideration to bill them. And I would agree, if the property is just sitting there, they have intention to do that, but are just speculating, you have, you could charge them, assuming they meet their criteria of in the city and benefit from the system.
How would you manage that though? That's the difficult part.
It does become a challenge. It absolutely does become a challenge. So if, I got to think through how that, how this works here. If they're not platted yet and they own the bulk land, they would still be getting a bill through the part of tax records, through the property tax. So they would still get a bill as long as they were considered in our city limits and in our corporate capacity, we would bill them.
Give you an annual fee.
Yep.
So I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm going to speak out loud here a little bit.
Yep.
So let's just say someone sells their property to a developer and it's not annexed into the city. But they're just sitting on it and waiting until they're, they think they can sell the lots or whatever.
Well, if they're out, if they're out.
Outside sitting lots.
Oh, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Right.
But also those vacant lots or those, those parcels, it's all grass or pervious surface that is going to soak in a large majority of that rainwater or stormwater. So that's another reason why, you know, until they build the house, until they get the meter in there, if it's residential, we'll add it on to their utility bill.
Any other questions?
So when you, when you talk about reducing people's bills, so the best example I can think of in Brandon is the Alliance lot has put in a rain garden. Am I saying that correctly? So do we have any idea how much they're reducing their flow, by just having that implemented in front of their building?
Not familiar with that property or a site plan, but typically rain gardens and things are not very significant in the grand scheme of stormwater runoff. They can be if you have big, really big areas, underground basins. I'm not sure exactly what the site looks like, but.
Yeah, so with theirs, they go above and beyond our design standards. So they would be eligible for some kind of a credit through there. They did submit mekels for their detention pond versus their rain garden. And since their rain garden is all sand underneath of it, theirs takes on a lot of their own stormwater. So very little of theirs actually goes into our storm system.
So then in that particular case, they'd be eligible for a pretty high, if not all, 50% of the reduction?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
There's nothing we need to approve on that tonight. Okay, next item on the agenda is old business, second reading of ordinance 638 cannabis zoning regulations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve ordinance 638. Any other, any, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Golf course, FEMA course repair project update.
I've been working with FEMA about two years. In September of 19, we had a historic flood down there and ever since then, been working with FEMA to get the damage inventory obligated between that and the parks. The major one that we wanted obligated before we moved forward was the bunkers and turf because that one is a large project. The FEMA has obligated $679, $264 towards this project. The city's portion will be about $101,000, a little over $100,000. So we do have a design build with landscapes in London that we approved last year in July of 2020. At that time, it was split into two phases. Phase one was the irrigation work because that was a necessity to get to go on right away. And then they could not move forward with phase two until FEMA had obligated it. So phase two would be the bunkers and turf. Since landscapes in London is not able to get started this year and it's getting a little late anyway, but they would come in first thing in the spring and get that going. And once all of the projects or the damages inventories are done with FEMA, that is when I can submit final payments and we can get final reimbursement for that. So I'm anticipating that we get everything wrapped up in the spring to early summer, get it sent off to FEMA and would potentially get reimbursed by the end of the year, which would cover the $101,000 because we have the bank stabilization we're getting reimbursed for, we have the irrigation project we're getting reimbursed for. So that should, that would cover that entire amount.
So potentially, what are the odds of it not being reimbursed?
Well, it's just the timing of it is all, is what it is. The timing on the projects, when they get done, to me submitting, to when FEMA sends the reimbursement. It could take three months, it could take six months to get it back. It just all depends.
This is a really important project. I'm sure Andrew would tell you that at this point, this is probably, I mean, we have a beautiful golf course and if we don't, for the amount of money that we would have, and I realize it's still a significant amount, but this is quite an opportunity that, that we can really distinguish our course. And it just has to, it has to be done, so.
So what's the worst-case scenario?
Cost you $101,000.
So worst-case scenario is, is, well, I'm not, I'm not going to go worst-case scenario because they can always pull off their money, but getting reimbursed. And we don't get reimbursed for two or three of these projects in a timely manner? Where does the money come from then, Christina?
Fun balance.
Fun, out of fun balance.
Yeah.
And we, we have an adequate fun balance to, to float these reimbursements, might say?
Yes. You know, FEMA's a reimbursement program.
Yes. You know, FEMA's a reimbursement program. So you are, you're uprunning the costs, and then FEMA reimburses you. So that's, that's what it is. And this is, this is all one project with FEMA. All of these items that I have listed on page 89 is all one project with FEMA. And until all of those projects are done and submitted, they won't reimburse you. So like, McCarty Park is done, it's been completed for months, but I can't submit anything. And I couldn't submit anything until it's obligated, and they won't reimburse me until all of those are done.
Okay, yep. Been there.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion yet, or is that?
It'd be nice to have a motion. That way I can direct Landscapes Unlimited to get their phase two contract rolling.
One quick question, how come they can't get out there this fall?
They're busy. They don't, they got too many projects and they're busy.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion and a second to approve the FEMA course repair project. Any further discussion? If not, call a question. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Couple of part-time employees that we need to hire. Eric Foss at the Pro Shop, car attendant, and Grace in Gruber Community Row. Motion and a second to approve the hiring of the part-time employees. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Parks and Rec report is there. We have an Aspen Park project change order on page 93. A motion and a second to approve the change order. Any, any discussion, questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Request to use McCarty Park on October 14th and 15th, made by Alliance. A motion and a second to approve the use of the McCarty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have the summer rec report, which looked really good. I, you guys had a great summer with summer rec, so hats off to all that was done there. We have a request to use Aspen Park on September 18th and 19th, Special Olympics of South Dakota. Oops, I'm sorry, I missed somebody. Oh, sorry.
I would make a motion to approve Nicholas Gunderson.
Yes. A motion and a second for the approval of Nick. Is it Gunderson? Gunderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now the request to use Aspen by the Special Olympics. What a great program. Approval to use Aspen by Special Olympics. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have the police report in front of you. Inspection report, fire department. And we move on to a wage adjustment for Melissa Laban. We have a motion and a second to approve the wage adjustment for Melissa. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. First reading of ordinance number 639, 2022 budget, found on page 107.
So I would like to make an amendment to that before we approve it. Hopefully, somebody will second, so we can have conversation. I really struggle with us giving help to finance and public works and not our engineer. So I would make a motion that we approve, but getting our engineer help, the equivalent of $20 an hour, full-time with benefits.
So I'll second it just for discussion purposes.
We have a motion and a second to add to the proposed budget, 20 hours for engineering.
$20 an hour.
Twenty, I'm sorry.
The equivalent of $20 an hour.
$20 an hour, full-time position.
Right. And I guess I'll ask Tammy to interject here, because she wasn't at the last couple of meetings. I know you've been put on the spot before and have told us that you need help, and what kind of tasks could be done. One concern, I think that maybe there was some hesitation over, we were told that you didn't make requests for help. Was there a reason you didn't make requests for help?
As far as I know, I did make a request for help to counsel. We talked about that at the, I think it was a briefing meeting before I left on vacation.
I think she was referring to back in May, when the, when the requests were interdepartmentally made. Did you make a request at that point?
Yes.
Maybe I misunderstood something, because Brian, can you help, help me understand? You said she didn't make a request.
There was not a request submitted under, by the request form.
Tammy, were you aware you needed to do that, or?
I guess I did make a written request.
Were you aware you needed to make a written request?
I was given budget forms, but I did not fill those out, because I just talked to Christina directly.
I think that was where probably some confusion was in terms of your requests, so.
Well, for, for me, a technicality like that shouldn't penalize her to go another year without help. And I, I think that we all know how hard she works, and how buried she is, and all the projects that we've laid on her. We've had residents say that, that they can't reach her. You know, I think part of that is because she is so busy and so buried. So I'm going to make that plea again and advocate that we don't overlook her when we're giving other staff help and support. I guess if anybody else has questions for Tammy, I would encourage that you ask.
I would, I would probably say that this is something that should wait until next year, so that we can study it, so we can have a, you know, we, we study all these positions in the past when we're, when we're building an additional position. We ask for documentation, we ask for, you know, what is the need? Can you document the need? And, and then you build the position and you, you put together, I don't think we have a, anything that outlines what this job would be. And, you know, I, I just don't see it at this point. I'd be more than willing to entertain it next year during the budget process, going through the proper procedure. We had a recommendation from staff for an additional full-time position. I'll talk about that a little bit later in this, because I'm going to, what's the word, circle back and bring that up again. But on this particular position, I'm sorry, I, I can't see it without a better look at it. And coming up with an arbitrary dollar amount of $20 an hour, I'm not sure where we, where we come up with that either, so.
The amount was just a penciled amount to earmark for the budget. I, I tried to look at what we budgeted the last couple of years for the intern that was supposed to be on a part-time basis, and just went from there. I wouldn't expect that it would be exact by any means.
Any further discussion? So we do have a motion and a second, I believe.
For the amendment, do we deal with the amendment first?
Correct. Just, I'm sorry, for the amendment? Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
I just have a quick thing. I don't know, I, I can see the need for this, but I feel like, again, I don't know where the money's coming from this late in the game. So that's the only thing I struggle with, is where the money's going to come from this, I mean, since we kind of have the budget already done. So I understand, Tammy, that you, you probably, I know you do need help. But I just, I don't, it's so late, I don't know. I struggle with that.
Okay, we'll go ahead and vote on this. On the amendment, this is the vote that we will take. It's not for the full budget, just for the amendment of adding a full-time position in the engineering area. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'm going to call the roll, mayor, if you want.
Yeah, we have to have a roll.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Call?
Name?
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion fails, mayor, because it's 3-3, and for an appropriation, you need four. You're not allowed, the mayor's not allowed to vote on that?
Boy, I'm just going to go home. I don't ever get to do nothing.
I'm going to make a motion to readdress the issue of the buy-down for the health insurance. It was 75, 50, 25, 0. And at our last meeting, we changed it to 25, 25, 25, 5. In fairness to our employees that have bought into the system all these years, I would like us to leave it as it stands in the budget at the 75 spend down.
A motion and a second to leave the, to state this right, leave the buy-down what it has been in the past.
The only reason I bring it up is afterward, I just felt like I voted to do that, to read, to change it, and I just really don't feel comfortable with that. I don't know that that's fair to the employees that have, you know, used our system. It's worked, and I don't know that we need to fix it, so to speak.
I would like to make one suggestion, or a modification, if you will, to that, and see if it may be acceptable. Right now, we go on a three-year, with the fourth year being the 5%. The 75% for a family just starting out, a lot of times, they've, they've got other options as far as, you know, maybe the wife is, or the spouse, I should say, the spouse, is, is working, able to pick up some insurance. That way, 75% is a hit. So if we, if we left it at 25%, and we're talking about 75% when they're coming into this, this job at the, at the beginning wage. So if we went with 25% and extended that out to five years instead of three, that way, you still get the buy-in. It's a little bit less than the, than the buy-in otherwise, but you still get the buy-in. And some fairness to, to those people, and it spreads it out. It's like taking a loan. You know, you spread that cost out over a number of years, it's a little more palatable for those that, that don't have another insurance option. And the 75% is, is the thing that probably, I kind of cringe when I think about it, when, when someone's starting out in that, in that career. Spread it out a little bit more, give a little bit more of a break. Is that something that you'd be agreeable to?
That's 75% of family, correct, Dave? It's not like single is paid for.
75% of family, but it's still, how much would that be if you, if a person had a spouse and, and children? Any?
I think we have one, I think it's 1,100 a month?
I, I mean, I, I guess.
25% would be how much a month?
It'd be 300, 400 if it's 12,000.
1153 a month.
But again, that's if you're taking the family coverage.
With family coverage.
And I don't know how often that happens. I'm sure sometimes, but I think we're equating it to single coverage, and single coverage is covered. I mean, I don't really have a big problem, you know, with what you're suggesting, Dave. I, I think we should just vote on it as is. I'm saying leave it the way it is, and see where the chips fall, and if it doesn't go, it doesn't go.
You know, we have heard from several people who actually work in the city of Brandon, not just sit at a table and tell them what they're going to do. And they've, none of them had a problem with it. We've asked one gentleman who's sitting out here, who's one of our more recent people on this thing, and he said he has no problem with it. It was designed for an employee retention program. It keeps people employed at the city of Brandon. There's 30 years worth of data that says this thing works. And to just arbitrarily say it's antiquated and doesn't work would be annoying. 30 years worth of, it does actually work.
On the flip side, Tim, I want employees that want to be here because they want to be here, not because they get a great benefits package. I mean, that should be a perk, right?
I'm, I'm very much opposed to the 75%. No surprise there, right? But I, I don't think that this is about, I, I understand that, that, that some, that employees feel like it's not fair, but at some point, I think the mayor said it fairly eloquently last time, at some point, you have to move on. And, and to me, this is about attracting the people in the future. And, and telling them they have to come in and pay almost $14,000 their first year for health insurance is not very attractive. I just feel like we want to have the opportunity to get the best of the best, and I think we need to be competitive with what else is out there in the industry. So I, I was fine with what, I think Dave made the motion last time to the 25%. So I'm, I'm, I'll be a no for this amendment.
So Dave, just to, just to clarify, so you're saying using a phase down from 25, and then the last year would be 25, or would be 5%? Is that, is that, am I understanding correctly?
No, it's what I, what I would say, instead of 75, 50, 25, we would start, and then, and then the fourth year, it's, it's 5%. And that's what it is currently. I kind of get, I kind of understand the point that Barb's making. I, I still have an issue with the 75%. You know, the biggest hit during that time that people are new. And again, it doesn't affect everybody. But it will affect a few people. We just hired a new police officer with, with children. I'm not sure what, what the status is on, on the insurance on that. But, but if, if they're paying 75% in order to get insurance coverage, that's, that's, that's a pretty substantial hit during their first years. And their first years is when they're at the lowest salary. So my compromise here is, instead of having this go three years with the fourth year at 5%, you start at 25%, or even, you know, you could say 30% for five years, and then it goes to 5%. It, it, you know, it's, it's, sometimes you can say it's the difference between a two-year loan and a six-year loan. You're, you're spreading, you're spreading that out, so that it makes it easier to budget that over time. That way, if you, if, if you did, my math is correct, if you did 30% for five years, you'd have the same buy-in. Or if you do 25% for five years, it's a little less of a buy-in, but I think it moves it in the right direction. It's not a, it's not a reducing 5% every year. It's, it's 25% for five years, the sixth year, it's at 5. And I think you still accomplish that, with that 5%, you still accomplish the retention, and you spread the pain out a little bit for those that do have families and, and do need that insurance.
Well, at this point, we have a motion and a second to vote on, going back to the original 75, 50, 25, 5. So at this point, unless there's further discussion, I would call for a vote on that.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Yes.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Call?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Okay, so that is defeated?
So then I'll come up with the, my amendment, of changing it to twenty-five percent a year. That would be for five years, with the sixth year dropping down to the five percent. That would be my motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to reduce the insurance to a six-year program, twenty-five, 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 and five. Any other discussion on that?
Just to clarify, if this doesn't go through, we leave it alone at twenty-five for three years?
That's what we voted on, correct?
Right, okay.
So if this does not go, we'd go back to twenty-five for three years?
Right.
And then the fourth year, it's five, is what I understand?
Right.
So that is right? So if we, this doesn't pass, we just go back to the original?
Right.
I do like your compromise.
And can I just clarify? I mean, you guys are really just voting for the budget next year. This is not a guarantee that next year, you don't change it. So you keep talking about, we'll do this for this year, this year, this year. I mean, we're just talking about one year. So I don't want employees to start thinking that that's what I thought when I came here was going to be this way. So I just want to make sure that people understand that. It's this year for next year, but doesn't guarantee the years after.
Sure. Makes sense. Okay, we'll go ahead and do the roll call again on Dave's proposal of a five-year, twenty-five, and the six-year, five.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
I stick to my guns, I'll say. Either way, it's like, okay, I'll go with your compromise, yay, yay.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Call?
Aye.
Parliament?
Okay, motion carries.
We have a compromise.
We have a compromise that we will go to twenty-five for five, and we'll change the first budget. So now we'll go back to the budget, first reading, and we need approval of that, Brian?
Yes, please.
Have a motion to approve. Is there a second on the budget?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the first reading of 2022 budget. Discussion.
Okay, I talked earlier about the position that we're looking at eliminating. And that would be the office assistant halftime position. And I personally, I do not like that idea. In 2008, when I started with the city as the police chief, we had, in that office, we had a city administrator, we had an assistant city administrator, we had a financial officer, we had a utility billing clerk, and we had a designated city clerk. We had five positions. Today, we've got a city administrator, we do not have an assistant city administrator, we have a financial officer, a utility billing clerk, we do not have a city clerk. And, but we did add the halftime office assistant, and that's her title. Office assistant, fourteen dollars and fifty-five cents an hour. A twenty thousand dollar plus change, twenty thousand eight hundred, I think they figured, at fourteen fifty-five for twenty hour average week. And an office assistant, among other things, answers phones, takes care of walk-in traffic, is handling duties in order to free up the other people in the office to do that. When I was with the police department, I had, and she's still here, an administrative assistant. I don't know if they're a police clerk, I'm not sure what the official title is. I always called her my admin assistant. And without her, it would have been very, very difficult to run the city. Brian, do you have an administrative assistant?
No.
Do we have any administrative assistants in City Hall?
Melissa might be one in the planning and zoning department. Tammy is the, Tammy Vanderbeek is the payroll personnel assistant.
Yeah.
And then Karen is the office staff.
Oh, so we've got, we've got a part-time office staff. Fully support the, as far as the assistant finance person that we're looking at, what is the hourly rate on, has that been determined?
I think it's around eighteen. Not officially determined, but around eighteen, eighteen to twenty, probably.
Yeah. One of the things that we do not have in City Hall that does concern me is we don't have redundancy. We don't have redundancy for the finance. We really don't have the redundancy. The redundancy for our city administrator is our finance officer, who, in my view, is kind of a de facto assistant city administrator on top of all of her other jobs, tasks that she has. She also works as the city clerk that we no longer have. We don't have that redundancy. She goes out on a medical or long-term family leave type of thing. That's a very difficult, I've seen that work that she does in the spreadsheets. We see the spreadsheets that put together. We're talking about a forty-five, almost forty-six million dollar budget that she's got to keep track of and manage, and do that all while addressing state laws, federal regulations, and how that money is handled, billing coming in, billing going out. I fully support the position that was requested for there. I don't think that you want to turn the assistant, what we're going to be calling the assistant finance officer, into a, an office assistant. In other words, being pulled away from the tasks that she's going to be given, or he is going to be given, and, you know, to answer phones, take care of walk-in traffic. They all do that to some extent, but I see this part-time office assistant as being something that is needed. And not to be someone that's just answering phones, but actually learning the job that we have here, that kind of goes into the next thing, and that's succession plan. And we talked about succession planning to a certain degree. And the person that we're going to hire, it is, it would be my hope that when that person is hired and they get trained up, and they're working in that capacity, that should that position open up, we're not scrambling trying to figure out what we're going to do as far as our finance officer. Our finance officer is an extremely important position, and I think it deserves our full support. And I think the office assistant, something we have, a part-time office assistant, is also a necessary position to allow the rest of the staff in City Hall to be able to concentrate on what they're doing without being interrupted with phone calls and things that they don't necessarily need to burn up their time. So my motion would be to put that back into, that part-time position back into the budget.
Dave, I have a question for you, since you were the former police chief. In 2008, how many officers did you have working for you?
When I started, we had eleven authorized, that'd be the chief on down, and then one city, or my clerk.
We have now, how many?
We have fifteen total people, fourteen officers, and a, the police clerk.
So we have a motion on the floor for the budget, so can we?
It'd be an amendment.
Amendment, okay, so it's an amendment, okay.
So, yeah, Dave?
Do we second it?
Not yet. So what is your amendment exactly?
Well, the amendment, the previous motion was to authorize a halftime, a second halftime position, or they could roll that into a full-time position and eliminate the halftime position. We're talking about two different, actually, two different positions in my mind. We're talking about an office assistant, someone that can operate as a receptionist, and that position also does, you know, other jobs as requested. So we're talking about eliminating that if they went with the full-time position. I'm saying we grant the full position that was requested and not eliminate the halftime position.
Not eliminate the halftime?
Not eliminate the halftime, keep the halftime position.
Going from one halftime position to one of the half-times?
Which puts us, which puts us at four and a half positions that was filled by five people back in 2008. So we're really not, you know, it's really not reducing the staff, but it's preparing us for, you know, I think back at the...
Greatly increasing staff.
Greatly increasing staff, one position is what we're talking about, one position.
But we already have a halftime position. Why don't we fill the other halftime?
Is the halftime position that we have right now a finance officer? No. So we're talking about adding an assistant finance officer to the city. Someone that, when trained up, will be able to, worst-case scenario, if our current finance officer is out for an extended period of time, or finds another job and takes another career opportunity, that we're not left holding the bag trying to figure out who's going to, who's going to manage all this stuff that we do on a regular basis. When, it kind of reminds me of the time that we put a halt to all water projects, including a well that had been bid, and they canceled the bid, and then we had the same person that put that moratorium, or got that moratorium put in place, started talking about concern about lack of redundancy because we didn't have the well that he put a stop to. And what if well number six broke? And then well number six did break, and we didn't have that redundancy. We're talking about a, some redundancy here. We're talking about a staff that's extremely lean. I don't know, I can't remember exactly why it was that assistant city administrator position wasn't kept. But we got, we got rid of that. I don't know why we didn't backfill the city clerk.
Dave, do we need a second on this motion?
Sure. I have one quick question. My understanding is we've approved the assistant finance position.
What we approved is an additional halftime position that could be turned into a full-time position if we eliminated the, basically terminated the halftime employee.
One total full-time equivalent.
I just feel like I need to interject this piece of information here because, Dave, you keep portraying that person that we hired in nineteen as somebody who's just answering the phones and just kind of a side person. I pulled her job description, and she has five duties. One of them is doing monthly account payables, processing monthly check printing for account payables, coordinate and maintaining swimming pool software. When I look at the request for what we need, focus on accounts payable, I would also have them take over the pool. So we have somebody doing it, unless we're not following job descriptions, but apparently they don't have enough time to do it fully. And I think that's why some of us want to take a step in the, in the direction to get that help, but not leapfrog from going from somebody working on this stuff fifty percent of the time to somebody working on it a hundred and fifty percent of the time.
Is the part-time person we have now, Christina, not interested in going full-time?
She's not able to go full-time. So is she doing her job description? Is she doing pool software and accounts payable and the things that we hired her to do, or is she doing other things? She's doing all of those essential functions, and then obviously, on any job description, on other functions, it's perform other duties as assigned. She does all of our ordering for all of our supplies, she does filing, she does mailing, she sorts the mail, she helps public works several times with books and copies and ordering. She does bus deposits, she does summer rec deposits, she helps Tammy with various functions. I mean, she does a lot of those other duties, she does a lot of office assistant work.
Dave, I agree with you on the redundancy issue, but as you stated earlier on the engineering position, let's put it off until next year then to reassess it and just go with the halftime. That would be my compromise.
So since 2008, we've added five people to the police department, and we have eliminated a half of a position from City Hall. And that, we're okay with that, I guess. As long as we're adding more to a certain department over others, then it's okay. So let's eliminate ones from other departments. I mean, since 2008, we've had a reduction of a half of an employee in City Hall. We have grown the same amount for the police to handle, for City Hall to handle, for public works to handle. All of them have to deal with the same amount of growth. But yeah, we're selling one department, they can't grow, when the other department grows seemingly with no restraints.
Well, at this point, we have a motion from Dave to basically reinstate the halftime position, leave the full-time position intact that we approved when we had the budget. And I believe, did we?
We don't have a second.
Do we don't have a second?
Second.
So we do have a motion and a second to approve the halftime position, understanding that the full-time position still would be intact in the finance area.
So is that your motion exactly? I'm confused.
Instead of adding just a halftime position which can be turned into a full-time position, that we would add a full-time position and leave the halftime position that we currently have on the books.
What was requested by city staff, or...
It's a halftime addition, Jack. That's what we're looking at.
Because we've already approved an additional halftime position.
To get the full-time, correct?
Okay, so now you're going to want to add another halftime, or turn that, or turn that halftime into a full-time, basically.
One way or the other. Yeah.
It is what the city staff had originally proposed in the budget, is what he's asking for.
Any further discussion? Again, let's do the roll call vote. This is now to approve reinstating the halftime position.
Yes. We need a, we need a wait for...
Can I just say one thing, Mayor?
I'm sorry?
I'm just going to say one thing.
Yeah.
You know, over the past ten, ten years, the city's grown by twenty-six percent, which means utility accounts have grown by twenty-six percent. We're talking about adding a storm utility fee, which is going to add work to our extra staff. And that's adding work to our current staff, and that just seems to be the continual trend. And at some point, there's a cap on what our current staff can handle.
Well, in my previous life as a CEO of Furniture Mart, there was one person I met with every day, and that was the CFO. So I'm in full support of what you're talking about. Even though I don't vote on this, I'll give you my opinion. And if there's an area of operation that... And if there's an area of, of operation that has to be, you don't want it to be, it has to be perfect, it's the financial end of it. There's no, unfortunately, in, in finance, it can't, it's not, good enough is not good enough, it's gotta be done right. And so, for what I'm, I'm giving you my opinion here, I probably shouldn't, so, anyway.
Well, Jim, I gotta throw in my opinion too, because, um, in my, um, career, not only did I always have to meet with that CFO, but there's also the safety officer out there. And we heard an example tonight of, uh, of a major safety problem, um, due to a contractor on our property or building for us, and, and we can't give our engineering staff help. I, I cannot, in good conscience, give our finance office help if we can't, if we can't look at safety and finances in the same light.
And that would tell me that that's, uh, kind of a, because we're not gonna have this, we're, we're, we're gonna do this out of spite?
No, no, absolutely not.
That's what it looks like to me.
No, absolutely not, Dave.
This is a-
Let's go ahead and, and, uh-
I have a question.
Call the question.
Clark?
Dave.
David?
Yeah.
Fish?
Nate.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Nay.
Okay. The, will stay in the budget the way it was originally as the additional half position, and-
I did make a motion, I'll just do a pass this budget.
Yeah, we do have a motion.
There's a good motion and a second.
Thanks, Brian.
A motion and a second, I believe, to approve the, uh, the budget. Any further discussion? Any other items or amendments that any of you like to discuss? If not, Christina, one more time, let's take a roll call vote.
Approving the budget as is.
Approving the budget now.
Clark?
Dave.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Nate.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Nate.
Parliament?
Aye.
The motion fails, Mayor, because it is an appropriation, and it went three-three.
So it looks like we all-
One, one thing about the budget is we do have to do a first reading, a second reading in September. It has to be lovely to the county by October first.
At this point, then, let's schedule another budget meeting as quickly as we can, so that we can get some kind of a understanding of, of a budget. It's disappointing to me, as much work as we put into it, and time that we've put into it, that we come to a vote like this, but when can we meet?
Monday.
That's, we're here, so. It's up to the council schedule.
Let's, uh, let's do it Monday.
Five-thirty?
Five-thirty.
Can I ask a question? Okay, I was listening to you waiting, you know, help. Do you guys take volunteers? I'm just asking a question.
What's your qualification?
I'm retired, I'm retired.
What's your qualification?
I don't know what you mean, but you, they used to clerk work. I've done, I've done so much, I've been supervisor, I'm in transportation, I was a supervisor in transportation. I've done, um, um, reports, like on bus operations, accidents, I've had the right reports, I've dealt with, you know, the, um, I've dealt with the sheriff, dealt with those issues. Um, I've also done, um, clerical work as far as timekeeper, house payables, uh, uh, I was, uh, a person that did the, um, like the call center, the rescue call center for the drivers, that all that, they have issues on buses, and, um, I dealt with that, I dealt with the dispatcher, where I dispatched buses, buses, one out, with service, I've done that. And it was a big, it was a California, and it was, uh, it was, uh, Alita Contra Costa County Transit District, it was pretty big.
Well, we, we appreciate the volunteer. We need to figure out what we, as a council, is doing first before we can-
What you may need as far as someone that can help you with the clerical portion of whatever is calling people and stuff like that.
Sure.
I think you need to apply to the position. I think you need to apply to the position.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, as far as, because I've done volunteer work for people when I was younger, just to help out, you know, just to help out with people. You know, I'm retired, I'm good, but I was just, you know, seeing you guys were struggling, so.
We are struggling.
Have you ever, have you ever been, have you ever been a referee or an umpire?
Hey, I have children, so yeah.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, uh, we'll schedule a meeting for Monday night.
Yep, five-thirty. Um, just a note, statute requires that the first consideration be undertaken within ten days of the first regular meeting. So, Monday, the thirteenth, the last actual day that you can approve the first reading, I think would be the sixteenth.
Well, do we need to move it up to Thursday of this week, then?
What I'm gonna request is, however long it takes, and whenever the special meeting is, whether it's Thursday or Monday, the council agrees to a budget.
I think we should move it up to Thursday. I really do. Sounds like we, um, we have a timeframe here, so let's move it to Thursday night, five-thirty.
I can't be here, but, you know, don't let that hold.
Thank you.
I can send somebody.
Okay, uh, contract with CCOG for redistricting project?
A motion to approve?
Yep.
Motion made.
Second.
Of a motion and a second to approve the redistrict contract with CCOG. Any discussion or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, resolution eighteen twenty-one, placing a moratorium on off-sale liquor licenses?
Second.
They motion a second to approve a moratorium on the off-sale liquor, liquor licenses. Any questions on that?
I have a quick question. So how does this come out of a moratorium? Does it have to be another council meeting?
Resolution.
Resolution.
Yeah, and I'd have you sometime consider the option that Christina has in her memo in terms of option A, and setting something. You don't have to do it tonight, but, you know, think about it, because at some point, we'd like to come out of a moratorium if you pass this, and then get a fee set.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanna call the roll on, on the resolution and then have a discussion on-
Fee.
What the fee-
Sure.
Is, so we can have some direction on that.
I'll make a motion for a moratorium.
I think, I think we have a-
We have a motion. I just need to call it.
And a second.
Call it.
So roll call vote.
I think we're gonna just call it.
We're okay, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do we wanna talk about the fee tonight?
I would go with a dollar personally, per person.
I would too, and I would just encourage us to not get too big of eyes on this, because we wanna attract business. We don't wanna beat ten times the, the price of them going to Sioux Falls.
So it's a dollar now, right?
No, it's not, it's five hundred bucks.
Five hundred bucks, okay.
So what we can do is prepare a resolution for the next meeting, hey, to remove the moratorium and set the price to the dollar per capita.
I think that's the direction the council would like you to go.
So our on sale is six times the population. And so, you're proposing-
I'm proposing a dollar, so it'd be eleven thousand, because like Sioux Falls is only like five hundred, isn't it? I mean-
I can tell you, discussion of the cities is increasing it, because you can only do it for the initial, and everybody's looking at increasing it, just because the five hundred doesn't cover it, but, and you have the legal ability, and you have a really strong liquor lobby up in Pierre, so the likelihood of changing it up there in terms of changing the renewal is unlikely, but at least initially you have some room.
I mean, I was actually interested in doing fifty cents on per population personally, but if we don't think a dollar's too much.
Well, so we'd go from five hundred dollars to eleven thousand?
Yeah, it's a big jump. That's why I'm thinking, maybe we should do fifty cents.
Yeah, that's, Jack, that's too much.
How about fifty cents instead? That'd be five thousand, I think that's fair.
Do you need a motion, or?
No, we need to-
Oh, they need direction.
So we'll just get something, so am I saying yes as in fifty cents? Yes.
Yeah.
If it's a majority, I'm, I'm fine.
What do you want?
Bucks.
I, I-
Because that's a, that's what we set the marijuana on that.
Well, we've limited the amount of marijuana, the, well, I guess we're limited on off, off-sale too, but seems like quite an increase. Let's, I've heard fifty, so.
I'm okay.
We'll grab fifty if you'd like to amend it, amend it.
Oh, God, no, no more amendments, no more.
Okay.
Green snacks.
Uh, next on the agenda is resolution setting foot, front foot assessment for street maintenance. Brian, what's that?
It's every year, we currently charge two dollars per linear front foot, um, on the address side of a, a street for street maintenance. That funds our micro seal or slurry seal, curb repair, um, patching, asphalt patching, et cetera. With the addition of overlays to Fifth and Sixth Street next year, we would need to increase that to two fifty a foot. It's been at two dollars for two years.
Okay. Makes sense.
I'd make a motion for a second.
A motion and a second to approve the assessment be at the rate of two fifty per, uh, front foot. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Encore Park Memorandum of Understanding.
This is an agreement between the ci, it's an MOU between the city and Encore Park LLC for the development of that portion of Encore Park between Holly and the railroad tracks. This doesn't include, at this point in time, the industrial portion north of the tracks. So basically, what it outlines is that we will work with the developer to, to certify a tax increment financing district, um, to reimburse the developers, since they're gonna upfront the cost, up to eight and a half million dollars over the next twenty years, to pay for infrastructure costs in that developments between the railroad tracks and Holly. Uh, we also agree that, uh, if it's in, uh, best interest of all the parties, that we would coordinate or work with them on any grant applications. So this is just saying, we're gonna develop a TIF district for them, and the, you know, the basis is eight and a half million dollars over twenty years.
And your, uh, staff is, is approving of this?
Yes, we're recommending this.
Recommending this?
It's just, it's, it gives the developer a little bit of, uh, hopefully some assurances that we'll, that we're moving forward.
Well, Tim's sort of my zoning and understanding of this stuff. Tim, what's your?
I'm looking to approve.
Okay. Okay. I like, I like your style.
Well, Brian, we had one letter, right? Did that go, and then there was another opportunity in October? Wasn't there something, some kind of grant, grant or something?
Yep, at this point in time, I think that's on hold.
Did that go through or no? Okay, but there was another chance, like in October, right, too?
Yep, uh, the developer's taking a look at, um, is, and correct me if I'm wrong on paraphrasing this, but is the red tape worth the money that the state may throw at the project? At this point in time, it really doesn't look like it would be.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to, uh, approve the Encore Park Memorandum. Question? Yeah.
So this is from Holly to the tracks.
Correct. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I, I want to clarify, um, it is, it is actually- Sorry, Wade Beam Head Construction, thirteen hundred West Fifty-seventh in Sioux Falls. Um, it is from Holly to the tracks on the, the west side, but it is also that northeast quadrant.
Yeah, that, that detention.
The detention pond, and, and, so that northeast forty acres as well. So it is both those pieces that are in the, are, you know, the phase one, two.
Phase one.
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, but not the potential rail site? Rail site?
Not the potential rail, though. That is, uh, that's a completely different project that will, will follow on.
With, with tax increments, you don't wanna start it too soon before the project is right, because you'll waste years of increment. So it's capped at twenty years. So if the industrial portion isn't ready to go for two years, you're only gonna get eighteen years of increment on it.
Okay.
So you don't, you don't wanna jump the gun on it too soon.
Makes sense. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks for sticking around.
Uh, development, yeah, that's an exciting project. Good luck, fellas.
We got two big projects up there.
They do?
Yeah.
Uh, we have a draft development director job description. It is a long job description.
And it was longer. Um, and I, I did strike out a couple of things that I thought were duplicates on, that we didn't need in there. And then I also changed, um, may serve as secretary and treasurer for the Brandon Development Foundation, and may represent the, the BDF on this Sioux Metro Growth Alliance Board. Those are decisions, I think, up to the, the board of directors of the Development Foundation. They're a separate entity than us, I don't think that we can require them to appoint someone as their secretary treasurer. Now, will that person be that? Chances are, yes, talking with a couple of board members, there's no volunteers to be the secretary treasurer, so.
Chuck, you're hiding behind that pillars, but.
Make a motion to approve.
Of a motion and a second to approve the draft of development director job description. Any other questions?
I will sit down with Julie, um, probably yet this week, and we'll lay out a, a timeframe.
Okay, good.
Has, has Dennis looked this over?
Uh, that I don't know. It's not really relevant to Dennis, what he does now, or what the job entails.
But when we hired this person, then we don't, then we don't have Dennis?
Correct.
Is that right? Okay.
Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second to approve the draft for a development director job description. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to street report, we have section fifty-three-ten transit grant agreement with S dot.
And I'm sure that you've all read the thirty-one pages for three hundred and thirty-
That was the longest thing I've tried to, Brian. I got it.
The three hundred bucks, right?
Three thirty-one seventeen.
That's how jobs appear.
Yeah. A motion and a second to approve the grant agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Modern Sewer DGR Proposal for Assistance to Prepare an Application for the State Water Plan. It's a, uh-
The, the state, um, has somewhere between fifty and five hundred million in American Rescue Plan funding, they think, that they would like to apply to sewer and water projects as those are permitted costs within that federal legislation. So in order to access, uh, whatever number it is that the state's going to be utilizing, we have to be on the state water plan. So we would like to submit an application to be placed on the state water plan for the west side trunk sewer, for three point, approximately three point nine million. Um, the deadline for that is October first. Once we're on that state water plan, we would then be eligible for- for hopefully funding from the state with the COVID money. Like I said, there's no guarantees. Um, they don't, A, they don't know how much they're going to spend, B, they don't know how they're going to distribute it, whether it is fully through the DNR board, or if the legislature is going to control the allocations, kind of like earmarking at the federal level. Yvonne at the league has...
It was quite a discussion at the mayor's meeting.
Has no information yet, hasn't heard one way or the other, but this, this is step one. This gets us into the game.
Okay, uh, we need to approve that. Motion second to approve the DGR water proposal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Water tower pay application. We have a payment due. I have a motion and a second to approve the water tower pay application. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just so I can get a little comment in here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Jim. Um, I think we heard some significant, um, problems out there at that site today. And, uh, something obviously needs to be done. We need to, I think we need to get that staging area completed. I don't know what it's going to take to get that done. Who, who drops, it sounds, it sounds to me like somebody dropped a ball on it.
Um, you know, I'll address that. We had a temporary easement.
Right.
That expired. And we paid $1,000 to them. Uh, a lot of times contractors are in charge of their staging areas. So, for example, Midco, remember when they were doing all the work, they paid over that pace area to stage their property. They paid for that for the contract, not, and, and so we already paid $1,000 to stage it if they wanted to, but usually that's something that the contractor does. So, you know, if you're going to want to spend more money on staging and not have that on the contractor, you can do that. But that's part of their agreement, is to handle their equipment, to provide a safe place, a safe workplace for their employees, to provide safety to the public, to stage their property in a safe manner. And that is really their responsibility. When that expired, Stockwell asked the city, my understanding is, do you want to spend more money to try and get another temporary easement? Because even though we paid $1,000 to the Nelsons and they didn't have the property impacted for that very good time, they said, well, only if you pay us more. Well, that's not really on us to do that. That's part of the contractor's responsibility. So if you guys want to, well, spend more money and find an easement, pay for staging someplace, we can do that, but that's not really on you. That is on the contractor to do that. So we can do that, but that was not on us to do.
Then Lisa, how can we legally get the contractor to do it? Because it's, it's a huge safety concern.
It's more what they have to do. They have to provide a safe work site for the, their workers, for the public. And if they're not doing that, they need to figure out how to get it done. We can have that conversation with them.
We need to have that.
Yes.
This is part of what you're doing, and you're not doing it. Part of your agreement to doing this project is to do a safe place. So Tammy's back, she can have that conversation with, and if you guys want to spend more money and find some easement to pay, to stage their equipment, you can do that.
We have to...
We can also bring things back and forth. So it's whatever you want to do, how much money you want to spend.
But why would we have to pay more money?
We need to, we need to hold them accountable.
That's the point that Tammy raised, that's the point that Stockwell raised, that's the point Tammy raised, that's Stockwell, and why should we do that? That's not our obligation. So we can do that.
But it's on them to provide a safe workplace and a safe environment for the public. That is their responsibility.
I think after tonight, we need to share with them.
So we can have that discussion.
You guys are going to have a work session, so between now and Thursday, Tammy can report back to you. And I just want to stick up for her, because...
No, I, and I, we're not, we're not putting blame on anybody.
She's had numerous conversations with those annexation people, and the water tower people, and it's, it's not just one response that she's had. So she is communicating a lot with them. Was she gone on her camping, her hiking without internet? Yes, she was. But before that, did she have a lot of conversations? She did. So we'll, we'll visit with the contractor and see what we can do with them, but...
I think coming from you with Lisa, Lisa, I think you need to help Tammy and be in the conversation, because there are some legal possibilities.
And I haven't been part of it. I, I won't get a part of it.
All right, thank you.
Well, I, I've got a list of things that we're going to contact the, the contractor about through Stockwell Engineers. Um, number one, there was no requirement for a second acre. I just want to clarify. We were only talking about ever purchasing one acre and utilizing one acre. The two acres that was alluded to, we wanted to purchase one acre from Ellison's. They wanted us to buy two acres. We did not have a requirement that we needed two acres. They wanted us to relocate the water tower further east, which would require buying two acres of land.
And more close.
We did not in any way, shape, or form propose that we were going to buy two acres from them. That came from Ellison's. Number one. Number two, the testimony that was given to the county, both planning and zoning commission and the county board, was one acre. There was no requirement put in place by the county, and nothing that we offered that we were going to have two acres. What did the contractor request? That's up to the contractor. We do not have the wherewithal to perform OSHA inspections. That was right. If the neighbors see something that they think is a violation of OSHA, they should call OSHA, and OSHA can submit a report. I would withhold making a, a, a judgment here until I see the OSHA report. Because I don't know if there's a violation out there or not. I'm not a certified trainer or a safety inspector.
Right.
I would wait to see OSHA. We will contact OSHA and find out what they say. Second of all, Tammy was gone for three weeks. I received one phone call about two and a half weeks ago from Mr. Ellison, wanted to be on the agenda to address safety concerns. I asked them, I asked him specifically if there's anything I could help him with, and he said, no, I want to be on the agenda. So if these are huge concerns, don't you think he should have brought them to my attention?
Was it Dave or...
It was Dave. I asked him a couple of times, and if you would like to hear the phone recording, I think we still have it.
Do we typically allow citizens to be on the agenda?
Yep, if they requested.
Oh, we do? Okay, I thought it was just public input.
Well, it is up to the mayor.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we, we, if, if they submit a form or an email, and what I told him was, all I need is a letter and email, here's the deadline to get it to me. He didn't have the courtesy to get it to me.
Well, I think at this point, we're mostly concerned about safety going forward.
Yep.
Have the conversation with...
We will talk to them.
And we'll, we'll go from there.
We need to hold these contractors' speeches higher a little bit on some of these projects. You know, and then that's, Lisa and Tammy, that's kind of on you guys.
First and foremost, any of these issues, so we'll have the conversation.
Yeah, from a sta, safety standpoint, there's, again, you have to hold them.
And, and I also think Stockwell's, because they're supposed to be...
Because they're doing the construction.
The admin, yeah.
Too, right?
Are they the management?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, they should be included also. So, even though Jack got his vote in, it passed.
Thank God.
Uh, any new business?
No.
Executive session?
No.
No, unfortunately, the exec session I was hoping to have has been postponed.
Okay. A motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Raleigh, Raleigh has something regarding OSHA. I was contacted two days ago. It said there have been violations or accidents on the jet site, but there's been some concerns. And so the only thing he actually questioned me on is the city has, that has a daily chore of making sure they're being safe. And I called him, our construction admin person, Stockwell here, is the one that should be watching. And he said, okay, so he's going to talk to Stockwell. So if there's no violations, it's not the absolutely worst construction site the OSHA inspectors have ever seen.
I think, I think that's good to hear, but we still want to make sure we're safe.
Yep, we're going to follow through.
And I think Stock, Stockwell, it sounds like to me, probably has a little more responsibility. Yeah, there, there's...
We've got a water tower truck early on. Their contractor's...
You do? Well, we, we maybe should start the budget meeting at 2:00. We might still be here, though. Where's that at, Raleigh? Okay. I'm learning a lot.